This conference will now be recorded.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors Meeting. Today is August 12th, 2025. The meeting is available by GoToMeeting. We have an agenda in front of us. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the agenda.
I made a motion. Is there a second? I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. We had two meetings last week, approved the minute, uh, the August 5th and August 8th, meetings and claims. Everybody get a chance to look over those. Any more corrections? Anything? Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion for the August 5th meeting and claims.
Mark made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And second. Any further discussion?
Got a question on the charge again. Terrorist laws? Was there anything said? Three thousand dollars? It probably built before terrorists or even it's not, it probably built before terrorists or even the most. It would just be there.
Built before that. I know that they gave me that information, you guys. Fortunately threw that number out there, but they told us it was possible because it was a manufacturer.
I think it's one of three thousand dollar increase on this, uh, they use name term, I guess.
We see the turn down the order they were going to charge us whether they were going to get them or not.
It seemed like easy money for them.
It does unless it costs the money to build platinum, that's that happened to work. They were trying to get us in that early build where it might not have affected us in the way the timeline worked.
Motion. Sorry. Recall Tom.
Aye.
Mark. Jim. I. Sidney. Fred. Jim. Motion passes. Donnie, attorney.
One thing I have is you'll see on that agenda, you know, that moratorium on that when I draft the resolution, um, just that none of that ordinance is in effect, even if it's going to be modified later on. It's in effect. Probably on the turn, I pay it since it expires or I think it's September, but it may as well be terminated now. That's all we got.
Anything for the attorney? Sheriff.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So I have July's fees for me this morning, total thirty thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars in twenty-one cents.
There a motion to approve Sheriff's report for July?
I move to approve the sheriff's report for July.
Jim made a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
I am second. Any further discussion? Recall Jim. Or Sidney. Fred. Pam.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Well, a couple of things for you to help, hopefully you can clarify a few things. Um, with the new wage scale or whatever clause that was placed by the, by the auditor, audit firm that was used, um, the board certified my wages on July 1st of 2025, and then I was notified after July 1st that there would be a downward, um, adjustment on those salaries. Did the board approve that downward adjustment also?
Sure, with downward adjustment you're speaking about.
That'd be no.
But maybe, maybe this will help clarify.
Okay.
So, because I had to do a little learning myself this last week. So, um, counties for accruals do them one time a year. And we had not been totally compliant with how we were handling weeks that were crossing the fiscal year. So we have to approve for, let's say, June 30th, uh, 29th or July 30th and 31st at, at the prior period. So we have to approve for that. And then that offset that rolls into the new year. Unlike businesses, the, the offset of that accrual doesn't get adjusted until the next year's approval. So some years you will be a little ahead and some years you will be a little behind because of the fact that those, in your first paycheck in July, so to speak, you're, you're getting paid for a couple of days of, uh, for, yeah, you're getting paid for a couple of the last days of the prior year at, at your previous rate. Well, your salary correct for the new fiscal year is X amount of dollars, but because of how the books have to be completed and we had to update our process to accommodate that and to be compliant, you know, some years you're going to be a catch-up and some years you're going to be a little ahead depending on where the last day of that fiscal year falls. And so, yeah, it, it means that you might have a few dollars that won't, won't catch up until the very end of next year because then they have to approve to make sure that your wage is exactly what it was approved at for 25, 26, you know. So, yeah, and I'm used to an accrual from one month to the next and it's cleaned up and why, and, and because government is different, I had a little bit of a learning experience that way. So whatever little variance there is on those two days or three days, whatever, every year it'll change because your days of, you know, it, it changes by your, your days of the month, so to speak, in your, in your fiscal years, the last day of the, of your pay period, it's going to change every single year. Does that help explain that variance? Now, your calculation also had to change from how they used to do it, which was your wage divided by 26 weeks. So they had to take your wage, and correct me if I misunderstood Elizabeth on this, but they have to take your wage and divide it by how many days there are in the fiscal year and, and then calculate that for the two-week timeframe. But there again, everything has to be at the end of the fiscal year, what variance there is there will be corrected, I don't want to say corrected, but that accrual will sweep back and it, it has to be right to the amount that you were approved for, you or anybody else for that matter. Does that make sense?
Well, yes.
And it isn't a matter of what we had better or worse, we had to get compliant.
Well, so they figured this new audit system on eight-hour days. And it is in pay period. We don't work eight-hour days, we work ten. We work two hundred and eight hour, two hundred and eight days a year, not two hundred and sixteen.
Okay.
And when I talked to Elizabeth yesterday, she said her firm was not involved in determining hourly rates. And so you would have to go back to the firm that you use to determine that for the sheriff's office because I'm assuming they just assumed everybody from their county works eight-hour shifts. And that's not the case. So our rate would be different than somebody working an eight-hour shift. So I, what I need to know, I mean, I can, I can figure it, I figured out the wages that you both certified or the downward adjustment that the audit firm says needed to happen to get onto the new syst, new system.
So.
Because it makes a difference in overtime pay and holiday pay, which are my guys.
Okay. So that would be a question that we would need to direct to the HR individuals, the two HR individuals, Alors and Cooney, that, um, that worked on facilitating that, that update.
So I need to know.
And this wasn't something that we just said, oh, let's, let's just do this. We had to get compliant. We had to get compliant. Elizabeth did mention to me in the last week that she has had other counties that also weren't, you know, you have to approve for what wage was in the prior fiscal year, in that prior fiscal year, because that has to, because that's a cash basis accounting system.
Yeah, and she, she says, you know, best practice, right? But I don't think it's a system that once I spent it all, we're seeing that this morning because it's not right for my guys.
Right.
And so they need to let me know because they're getting overtime at some speed, right? And at what rate when they charge it in to the county act? Because the hourly rate is not right based on what you guys certified for the sheriff's office in July and then what the downward adjustment is, I mean, what's happened.
Well, their, their hourly rate, if I'm not mistaken, was sad. So whatever the new hourly rate is.
Nobody's figured it on the ten-hour shift.
Well, but I mean, an hourly rate is figured on an hourly basis.
But it's different. If you have a downward, um, adjustment in the salary.
You're talking a salary situation. You're not talking.
It is not new coming up. So mine, it's no secret, went from forty-seven ninety-eight sixty-five to forty-seven eighty-twenty-one. So that's a difference in how we bill our hourly rate for those guys in overtime.
So I would suggest that we, we can take that, my suggestion would be that we could, could engage in a conversation with the two HR individuals that, that calculated all of that out, um, so that they can maybe further answer those questions. I was trying to answer the question about, you know, so, so when you get to the end of next year, your, your paycheck is going to be.
And I, I understand all that.
It's going to be bigger.
Yeah. I don't know if I, I don't get what you guys.
Your concern is over the people that are salary, but also getting hourly overtime compensation.
Yes. I just kind of had them look at their sheriff's department's numbers and see if they're top with.
No, because I don't know if this helps or doesn't help. When they get certified, either certified at an hourly or salary rate, so they get certified at salary rate, you know, so they didn't look at anything with the hourly or overtime.
It does, but they seemingly have to, you know, for it to be right. Can you bring that up for them as far as the hourly and for the overtime and see if they come up with? And I guess the only other thing that I don't want to have happen, and I think it was Rachel Sard and Lindsay are trying to work through this too, is that my deputies that have a salary of a hundred and four thousand dollars, then work maybe ten, uh, ten thousand dollars in overtime and holiday pay, so they're a hundred and fourteen thousand fiscal year ends. And they look at that and say, well, they made their base because look at a hundred and fourteen thousand. There's probably a separation, right?
Exactly, yeah. It's our report to show your salary or hourly, whatever it is in the first count, and then the overtime, double time, in the first count, and each of them.
Yeah.
So we can pull up by the first one and make sure that their salary is a hundred and four.
Yeah, and I thought so. So if we get that cleared up, that should help these guys understand what's going on.
Does that make sense though, that we're not doing that just because we got to win? We, we have controls that we have to follow and we're just trying to.
It's just not after twenty-five years to say no, no.
Yep.
Twenty-five years.
God only knows.
It's just.
Experience that little environment too.
Um, lastly, now, what you guys, that's a bit more important than this.
Yes.
Mayor Oregon and I have talked several times over the last probably maybe a year or so. He is wanting to make certain that St. Ansgar has law enforcement coverage if their chief retired. And I told him all along that that's not a concern, that we will cover St. Ansgar. Citizens up there don't have to worry about having law enforcement coverage. That has gone now to maybe, um, a couple of options. Contract law enforcement for St. Ansgar. In which you folks will decide rates and what the contract might look like, and he's part of that. Two, another option for them is to hire another policeman so that when the chief retires, they already got the coverage. And so nothing would really change from the sheriff's office standpoint, who would continue to assist them up there whenever they need us or handle calls when a policeman is on days off or on vacation. He's not certain of which way they want to go. But I've always said that this has to come from city to the county. I am not going to shove something like this down the throat to city government. It's not a county thing pushing on the city government. So I think Mark was at a meeting last night, it was a topic, a discussion there, it's not at that meeting. And maybe the mayor can address or more can. But I just want you to know that that's been talked about, that St. Ansgar will continue to have law enforcement coverage depending on what their situation turns into and St. Ansgar sheriff's office is willing to contract cover those services or simply until they get somebody else up and running to assist them with it. Question, just so you can remind me as far as what we do. So some of our unincorporated towns now, we do provide service to them at a very reasonable rate. Yes, yes. And want to drive, if any occasion. Yes. That's absolutely right. Drive-through services, um, certainly handle any nine-hour calls that come in, that's without question. Parking dogs, snore room stuff we don't deal with. City, city workers can deal with those types of things. But the short answer is you're, you're right. So the town of San Jacinto has much, has much more, I'll say, need than what town Orchard would. I don't, maybe that's said wrong, but there's more people there, there's more going on. So would it be just a simple drive-through through St. Ansgar? Doesn't seem like it would be appropriate. So would it be more coverage or more hours or how would that actually be structured? Yeah, so I, and I told the mayor and the city council, I can't dedicate four hours or ten hours a week to the city of San Jacinto. I don't have staff for that. But we are through St. Ansgar pretty regular. We will go to football games and sporting events if we're requested and make sure that that happens, um, get the coverage that they want. The problem with saying that I can give St. Ansgar ten hours a week or the hours a month against one deputy working and he's supposed to be in St. Ansgar handling services, rural areas are getting nothing done because he is tied up there. That's why the other contractors are structured, you know, also. Drive-through services is what you get and if you call and request a specific service or there's a vehicle crash, we're going to handle that, so we're going to take care of it. But if you sit and monitor traffic on a street in St. Ansgar, um, probably not going to happen unless there is a specific problem, send a deputy to take care of that task when that's over, he's, you know, he's not locked in for that maximum hours. I can't do that. But I can provide the coverage, the staff I have, the way we currently do it with drive-through services.
Can I ask this question? So even though Riceville is split fifty-fifty, they also have school and a few more individual center. How, do we do anything with Riceville that way currently?
Um, so here's how Riceville's structured. Years ago, they wanted the sheriff's office Mitchell County to contract with them. And I told them no, that's after they retired, their chief retired. They hired one when they were very low and they moved down, that's city council. I told them no because again, with staff I have and oftentimes one deputy will be working. If I covered all of Howard County with one deputy in contract, then my Mitchell County folks did nothing, not getting nothing for that period of time. I wouldn't do that. So they chose to contract with Howard County, new sheriff over there. It's going to be good. But I also said that folks on the Mitchell County side, who supported my office all these years, are still going to see Mitchell County cars and trucks handling calls in Riceville. And so collectively, we think all of Mitchell will take care of it.
We don't have contract with them. It's just fear.
No contract.
Right. Okay. And you know.
Not obligated to.
We have Howard County, so.
We do, we do a lot of agreements.
Sure.
There's a serious issue. And then we're on the Mitchell County side where it's just, but a deputy reserve kind of thing would work for us. And then there's stuff like that or is that. Well, um, that would be some of the people I rely on to cover sporting events and special events in the community. But I can't lock those folks into maximum hours per month because we're working full-time jobs anyway. And so oftentimes I'll call and say I have an open shift and somebody worked it and I might have to two, three, four, before, until some of this, I've got an open schedule to work that shift. So that would be carried clear on that. It just wouldn't work.
What is with you and me talking is hiring another police officer. Part of the discussion.
Can I refer back to the mayor?
Sure. Absolutely.
Okay, yes, Lance is reaching retirement age. And if you try to find a police officer to put in your city or county, it's hard to find one, right? We do have a young man that's interested in going into the police business and the city is willing to hire him. Problem is we can't afford two full-time people. We'd be doubling our budget. And if you know how budgets are now, this day and age, to take, to double a budget for St. Ansgar is almost impossible because the money comes out of all the other needs. Police protection is one of the highest budgeted processes that we have. Our hope is to get this young man through the academy, get his credentials, and then at that point in time, when Lance is ready to retire, he can retire, he can be back to one. So for the next two years, budget is going to be because of the situation. The council desperately wants to keep a police officer in town and not go this way. We also have to think about what's good for all the citizens and citizens. We can't rob out of the general pleasure and not do anything. We're borrowing money now to try to, the limit to that.
Well, I.
If you're going to balance your budget, you got to make some, um, hard decisions sometimes.
I'm just thinking of the, um, obviously the St. Ansgar people, but when our deputy, our county is getting, seems like it's getting bigger and bigger because we're covering the Riceville, we got the Southern. What I've gone with this is that our deputy could be a long ways away from a situation that you guys in St. Ansgar need help. So eventually it would be nice to be able to replace Lance when he's.
That's our hope.
Retired.
But the gentleman that's, we have, that's willing to go through the academy doesn't want to live. And also doesn't want to allow that in because the man in town wants easier to get a hold of than the deputy sheriff. But in the middle of the night, the deputy sheriff, he has his pants on and he's sitting in a lawn car ready to go most of the time. It's not like it wouldn't be quicker times. But until we reach that, I don't, I think we're up near, I don't know where, it's all been land. The hopes are that we can figure out how to balance this so that our budget will work and not interrupt everything else that's going on. That is our goal. But a year ago, we saw this stuff coming. We talked to him and we talked about it different times because I was concerned that we would have seamless coverage if Lance retired and we don't have that. That's how it all began.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Department head.
Good morning. Good morning. So I was hoping, okay, you guys, just wanted to let you guys know, you guys have probably already heard this, I'm sure, um, but Fox River Mills has officially announced that they are closing. They're going to be acquired by Nestor Hosiery, um, which is located, their headquarters is in North Carolina. So all production will be relocated to North Carolina. They still want to have a presence here. They still want to be able to retain about sixteen employees. So they are looking on building to retain those sixteen employees to do, um, their customer service, their research and development. And then a hundred and five employees would be part of that layout. So we did have a job fair last week. We will, it sounds like their Fox River Mills is, um, looking at allowing us to come in there right on site and do a job fair when it gets closer towards like that end of production just to help those lost employees that have not found work yet and also just to like provide whatever supports that are needed out there at that time. The building is not, is not part of Fox River. It's owned by a third company in Solace, like it was listed at some point, um, but there is the, the building, it's almost twenty acres and, um, it's quite large, it's two hundred and thirty-four thousand two hundred square feet. So I do meet with the real estate, um, the workshop company tomorrow just to discuss ideas and stuff. I mean, as far as building goes, I can, you know, market it and stuff on some of the websites that I have, like our, it's called GoAs Location and Information System. It's a statewide database so that when like site selectors are looking for buildings and stuff, they can just go there and find that information. So I'll most likely get this information on that site. Any questions?
And the new building that they need, needs to be how big?
Um, at least ten thousand square feet. So that, I mean, obviously it's kind of a new struggle. It's just not available in the county. We were open to even like Stacyville, um, St. Ansgar, some of these other smaller towns. But I think right now the, the option that's available is the plaza, um, which I don't think it's a secret to anybody that there's issues out there that need to be addressed. If they're not addressed, they're not going to be happy there. It's not going to probably be very pretty. And so if they do, if they do decide on that location, it needs a new roof, parking lots, churches, I mean, there's some needs out there. I mean, obviously John D. moved out because of, obviously some of those same reasons and stuff. And so at this point, it's just finding that building, um, that they're going to be happy with because we do want them to, you know, have that presence here. We do want to retain those employees. So it's just really matter figuring that out.
Anything else?
With that building, Fox River building, will, um, possibly any local businesses be?
Potentially. Potentially. Any questions? Thank you, Jenny. Any other department? County and Jim?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Talking about this. The bridge, the back end tire, we opened, uh, the filing concluded this week for a lot less years, everything, a little more done with the encased ones ready. And then we're trying to close out our existing bridge that we did. And then the paving side of things, they're open, they have all the handwork done by the end of the week. Once the handwork's done, they can get the shoulder machines in. I don't know what the exact schedule is on that yet, but we're able to get back into our offices anyways. Sneak our way around, but we get in, so. Hopefully by the end of the week, things will be more convenient for us to get in and help. It's pretty mature, I mean, they. It's pretty mature. I mean, they, they can get in and out.
They've been doing, they've been rolling remixes to some of the handwork and they can't stop me. We, we're able to, we as the, the locals and the contractor are able to travel, travel to go to get their point of view. Trying to keep it buttoned up while their employees got hit by a car yesterday. Yeah. Thank you. It's some injuries, but I didn't give the full story of it. Somebody just used to, we closed. Anyway, we'll keep it buttoned up as tight as we can with the locals still have access to their houses. All right. And we got our foundation here, so start. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number seven, approve resolution to end moratorium. And this, I forgot to write down, is thirteen oh seven, thirteen oh seven dash twenty-five. Um, termination of moratorium enacted by resolution, number twelve sixty-two dash twenty-five, whereas the moratorium enacted by resolution twelve sixty-two dash twenty-five no longer needed or necessary, be it resolved that the moratorium enacted through resolution twelve sixty-two dash twenty-five is terminated in its entirety. It's approved August twelfth, twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve resolution thirteen oh seven dash twenty-five?
Move to approve.
Jim made a motion. Is there a second? Second. Second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Sydney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Question passes. Thank you. Discussion and possible action on sending ordinance sixty-two to Mitchell County zoning commission for possible amendments.
Put this on there. Um, we went through this. We know there's some things that need to be amended. Amanda sent us an email regards to the board to submit anything that they have that they feel needs to be changed on it. And assuming that I did, I'm assuming the board has done that. So I've been, it's just simply to get, basically get her authorization to start having the zoning commission start looking at it.
All right. I think that's good that you jumped right on that and getting it amended sooner rather than, than later getting whatever issues. Um, if in fact, um, those amendments are passed, I just want to note that if in fact NICO did the last, continue the last editing of that contract or that ordinance, I should say, the ordinance, then the amendment publishing it will be more than likely, or should be likely, at their cost, not Mitchell County's. I was informed that, um, sometimes things like this happen and, and counties have to amend something that was just in the name. And if NICO was the individual that did the final draft of the ordinance, and is that the case, from what I understand? Right. And it isn't a blame situation, but it's that, so that the accounting for, for the cost of publishing those amendment changes in the newspaper fall where, where they should fall.
So the board then, uh, there's five of those that are ready. And I didn't see the errors, John Robbins didn't see the errors. The zoning commission, most of the five on there, didn't see the errors. So we talked about it. Didn't see the errors, but we're gonna blame John Robbins for it.
He had, you know, an outside attorney do an ordinance, you know, because this is an ordinance. You know, there are certain things that they need to double check, you know, certainly spelling is one, but I'm not going to pick on that. But I'm just saying, whatever the cost to publish that amendment is the responsibility of NICO. And I've been told by that, told that by, um, our auditor. So I, I'm just sharing that information that indeed we should maybe be aware that, you know, whatever, and certainly it won't be the seventeen hundred dollars it costs us to, to publish the first version. But, um, he was hired for that purpose. Does that make sense? You know, that's, that's what we paid for a completed edit audit of the ordinance. And, and that is, I guess a couple of questions are, you know, I had some people on that board and I'm sure they also addressed Amanda that, that are concerned about, well, now it's going to cost us again. And so we did a little information seeking. And yes, that is something that would need to be discussed with John and NICO, but, um,
if NICO doesn't approve it, then.
And if NICO doesn't approve it, then, then we'll have to address it at that time. I'm just, I'm just, you know, putting that concept out there because that, that was the contract. Does that make sense? Does that make sense?
Yeah. A lot of it could have been, uh, taken care of, but they would have public comments. Easy to say now, but not yet.
No, that's not true.
Always.
No, that's not true. Um, when the zoning commission was going through their public hearing process, there was public comments. Um, we were able.
The very last one.
The very, yeah, the very last one. Um, there was public comments. And we had a total of five people show up. So please don't spread that misinformation that we did not offer public comments because we did. Um.
Can the commission ask people in the audience any question if they wanted?
Correct. It was, it was almost like open discussion that night. Um, so.
Yeah.
The, the wind company was there. Tom Trey-Horn was there. They asked Tom, um, anybody in the audience asked Tom a question just to get clarification on it. So that is completely incorrect.
Well, I, I understand where both of you are coming from on, on that subject. And, you know, there was at the last public, at the public hearing for the final one, there was public comment would have been allowed and Amanda's right. It was, it was nil for attendance and, um, it was right in the middle of planting season, but.
There was proper notification of every single meeting. Um, and if more people wanted to submit comments, then they could have reached out to my office, submitted those, and I could have provided them to the zoning commission. If they wanted the zoning commission's phone numbers or emails, I could have provided that to them. So there are multiple avenues to go down on, to get in contact with not only me, with NICO, with, um, the zoning commission themselves. But yeah, there was max six people at that last meeting and it was practically open discussion.
It might have been a little bit of the timing of the year. That might have kind of contributed to some of that.
I can't help that.
I, I understand that, but I'm just saying that might have, you know, we didn't allow a lot of public discussion prior. And maybe that's what, is, is that what you're trying to say, Mark? Get some of the prior meetings? And I don't know. You could ask for check with your commission if that's something they're comfortable with moving forward if they do any additional ordinances. I'm just bringing up the, uh, concept that I was presented that if indeed that final contract or ordinance was constructed.
Some of those changes were people's opinion.
Um, correct. Those have all been submitted to her and those were people's opinions. The distance one was an error, you know, the spell check. And we allowed a lot of grammatical errors, word errors, and spelling error adjustments already. It's born allowed that already, but.
Again, some of the changes were wording where some of it's people's opinions. That they thought this word should be changed, this word. Um, I think we should put the whole burden on that. I had a lot of people talk to me. This wouldn't be better than that.
I'm just stating what some policy is currently out there for those kinds of things. I'm just making you aware.
Well, is there a motion to approve sending ordinance sixty-two to Mitchell County zoning commission for possible amendments?
I move to, uh, send ordinance sixty-two to the zoning, planning and zoning commission for possible amendments.
Can I make a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Jim, second. Any further discussion?
Roll call, Tom.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sydney.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Mark. Motion passes.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
So if, because a lot of people don't, uh, read the paper, I would say, and it's not required, but would it be helpful to post like agendas for your meetings so public knows or they can see that on the website to go to have these discussions before it comes to you guys where the change is being made?
On the website?
Yeah, like if, I think, I don't know how to do it, but you can create tables and post agendas just like we do. I don't know if it'd be awful if some people.
I know.
Bashed upstairs, of course, on Facebook, of course, they're being noticed. You could have a thing on your, you know, like under the findings. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's not that difficult to send an email to Ryan with the agenda that asks to propose it online. It's not like it's a burden on my office. So it's not a bad idea.
We just have to. It would not be able to go under the supervisor one.
They would have to go on, they should go on like the zoning thing.
We, we can have.
It's always good, isn't it?
Until it's too late.
Mark, did you vote no?
Right.
Thank you. Discussion and possible action on authorizing Mitchell County's planning and zoning director to begin the process of developing a proposed solar ordinance.
So Amanda. Can you, this, is it easier to show up to the table because people can't, can't hear very good?
I mentioned that one time, Amanda, in regards to, I was glad to do this and I guess actually that could probably is. I hope the rest of the board thinks, but, um, I put this on also and I want the board to.
I had, I had a question whether it should be involving the board of adjustment and your board of commissions? Cause didn't your board of adjustment approve for those two solars to go up?
So when it comes to ordinance creation, that goes to the zoning commission.
I know, yes.
So, but having, I mean, having both boards involved.
Yes.
Is not a bad idea, but I almost, I don't know how that would work maybe, Erin. Would the board of adjustment have to attend as like the public or would they be able to actually sit in with a commission meeting? I don't know how that would work, I suppose, combining both boards in the one meeting.
Maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think the board of adjustment needs to be a part of the creation of the ordinance. I think they're involved after when it comes to variances and things like that.
That's a question.
If you want to ball, yeah.
I think input could always be given as like a public comment if they would like to attend, but yeah.
I'm asking, yeah, you don't have to do the two boards, but I just, I just know, I've had a few people ask if the board of adjustment would be involved in this discussion, just helping.
Yeah, I mean, I can keep them in the know and like when the meetings are and stuff.
I think that would be great because they might know a little bit more than what your commission would know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Question regards to what Sydney talked about in the, uh, small solars that were put up. Wasn't the board of adjustment part of that because it was an initial use permit for the location? That's what the board of adjustment does.
Yeah, yeah. So the board of adjustment had to approve, the words are interchangeable, conditional use, special exception, special use. They had to approve those. Um, so they went through a special permitting process to be able to get those permits.
So as she said, they probably have some information that the commission might not have, so it does not hurt for them.
Yeah, no, I'm not.
We in on some things.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it.
And you'd also just give your commission their information so that way maybe they could.
Yeah.
Cause your two boards can't converse with each other, but, I mean, right, but they can ask the board of the, the commission to ask.
Collaboration is definitely something that can take place, yeah.
I think that'd be great. It's a good idea. Uh.
Um, but yeah, I, I gave the idea, um, it's over a while, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, a month ago, I don't know. Um, because I had some inquiries from a company, um, where they want to put in large-scale solar in the county. Um, so I think getting ahead of this possible moratorium in place, I'm not sure how that would look for you guys. And if you wanted to go ahead with creating a solar ordinance, but, um, I don't think it's a bad idea because I mean, we were behind on wind, so I'm kind of behind on solar. We might as well start playing catch-up now before we regret it.
Okay. So you just want a, a motion to approve to send it to your board of commission? Is there a motion?
Move to approve the authorization, uh, planning and zoning administrator to protect the zoning commission to, uh, look into a proposed solar ordinance.
Jim made a motion. Is there a second?
I second him.
Pam, second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Sydney.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Mark.
Pam.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Um, I guess I would just need suggestions from you all on if you would like to have some sort of outside help just like we did with the wind ordinance. I've actually already got a quote from NICO. But if there are other companies that you would like me to look at and where you talk to, I can get quotes from them. Um, and regarding just the possible amendments, um, I did send out that email. I have not heard back from everybody on the board quite yet. Um, so if you guys can send those suggestions or even if you have none, just send that you don't have any suggestions, that's fine. Just so long as I hear back from each and every one of you, that would be helpful for at least the commission's purposes. Um, and there's a meeting scheduled already. If I throw the date out, it's probably going to be wrong off the top of my head. So if you have further questions about that, I can get that for you once I look at my calendar, so.
And, and to be clear, when you're talking about suggestions from the board, you're talking about the wind ordinance.
The wind. Yep. Sorry. Yes. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Amanda.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. We have approved the president's report for July. Shannon's not able to come down here today. Um, very much into approve. Time made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mark, second. Any further discussion?
I think we should state the dollar amount.
Yes, please.
Total revenues processed were one million, one hundred seventy-one thousand, six hundred seventy-four point zero seven dollars.
Thank you for that.
Wow, guys. Oh, it's fine.
Roll call, Pam.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Sydney.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'm not too quick there. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's all right. Yeah, fine.
I'll read this one. Approved recorder's report for July, uh, seven thousand, two hundred ninety-seven dollars and eighty-two cents.
I move to approve the recorder's report for July for seven thousand, two hundred ninety-seven dollars and eighty-two cents.
Can I make a motion? Is there a second? Jim, second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Tom.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Sydney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have approved fireworks permits. We had that. Uh, Russ Nelson. Correct? And they do have insurance.
Make a motion for fireworks permit?
Mark made a motion.
I second it.
Second, Pam, second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Jim.
Hi.
Sydney.
Hi.
Pam.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Tom. Motion passes. Discussion on possible action on contract for services for St. Ansgar Heritage Museum and History Center. We had this last year, right?
Just the one that we talked about during budget? This isn't a different one, this is the.
Same one.
Want to talk about budget, okay?
Yes. Correct.
So that was, was gonna be one of my questions. You know, they're looking for help with general building maintenance, front door needs a new step and, um, some also additional work on the door, would also like to do some painting and help with the utilities is always welcome. Is that standard operating expenses that we're used to being responsible for? I'm just asking that question.
Excuse me, give them a half, make it bigger.
Okay.
Was it like forty-five hundred or four, four thousand?
I haven't been asking this year.
I don't think they stated an amount.
They did, no, sorry, that's why I'm asking. Have they sent anything in the email?
I haven't.
Okay. Four thousand last year.
Keith, are you aware how much the city contributes to that museum?
There has nothing to do with that.
Did you not, you do that, okay. I'll make a motion for four thousand, same as last year.
This will be resolution thirteen oh eight. Thirteen oh eight dash twenty-five. Mark has made a motion for resolution thirteen oh eight dash twenty-five for the amount of four thousand dollars to the St. Ansgar Heritage Museum. Is there a second?
A second.
Tom, second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Mark.
Hi.
Pam.
Hi.
Sydney.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Tom.
Hi.
Motion passes. Discussion on possible action on contract services for Meyer Historical Society. Looks like they are asking five hundred dollars in funding. The funding that's supposed to be used to help, um, excuse me if I say this wrong, defray the cost of two bands for their hundred and twenty-fifth celebration. This would be resolution thirteen oh nine dash twenty-five.
So yeah, it's their, their big event and I believe they're asking the same amount that other cities or towns have asked for their celebrations. Meyer doesn't, doesn't usually come forth with a request, so, um, I move that we, uh, complete resolution thirteen oh nine dash twenty-five contract for services for the Meyer Historical Society for their hundred and twenty-fifth, uh, event in the amount of five hundred dollars.
Madam, the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mark, second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Tom.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Sydney.
Hi.
Pam.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Motion passes. This year now we have approved liquor license for Meyer Historical Society. Uh, has license information. Address, two six nine seven Horned Edius Street, and that's it. My surname is, and they have insurance.
I move to make a motion to include legalizes for Meyer Historical Society.
Tom made a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
Pam, second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Sydney.
Hi.
Tom.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Motion is second, I'm sorry.
Uh, Tom and Pam, Tom. Meetings.
I had OCSA city council meeting last night. And then, uh, last week I attended Mitchell's city council meeting and last night I attended the OCSA and Stacyville City Council meetings. And, uh, presented them with the agreement that we need to have done with him in regards to creating parcels, proposed parcels that we are, parcels that we are proposing to help fund building projects on those parcels. Uh, all three city councils were happy to be part of that, uh, had signatures from them. And then those will come before this board. Uh, that's kind of a bond council decision as far as how the timeline goes for doing this process. But just want the board to know that those three cities have been done. Uh, a comment in this had to do with the Heidi meeting. And you wanted to say Ansgar's project within that, and we also, I guess, agreed that it would definitely be in there. There will be some information that needs to be gathered in order to make that happen. We can't just have the estimate, I mean, parcel information and location of the construction and the type of, there's gonna have to be some details so it's known to be what put into that. And that's possibly then we will also have to go to the St. Ansgar City Council if there's parcels that we need to add. So I mean, there's things that are gonna need to be done. And Heidi did say that, uh, she thought it was a good idea that we actually get something in place by the end of August in order to, uh, get this thing going. So that's all I had.
We had, um, lots of means of, the only meaning for this is the land bill. They had a very good month, we went over budgeting. They emptied their three times last month of recycling of twenty-five hundred pounds. Uh, their new scale is doing great. Talked about getting, what was that called? Um, not a dozer.
A compactor?
Compactor. They talked about updating their compactor, so they were looking in and driving some of those around and test driving. All of this, our input on that, so that will go to our executive board next month to see what we're able to do. Um, budget looks good. All their, um, compliances is good, so. Sounds like a new cell might be coming in in two years that they're gonna start creating.
Hmm.
So working hard on it. That's it.
So the only meeting that I attended was also the Stacyville City Council. And, and I've worked with St. Ansgar, I'm already visiting with them about their parcel information and, um, location, exact location. I do believe that the street that goes south of St. Ansgar is already part of our urban renewal because it's one of our, um, roads. But I've followed and double-checked all that information, sure that we have all that here.
Up to see that it's, I know it is.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm not really sure where this is.
Right. Yeah, right. All that, all that is all.
So.
Yep. So we'll get, we'll get that information in and, um, get that to Heidi. Is Heidi the woman that's drawing up that paperwork? Or the resolutions that John presented, or John?
John does the.
John. So I'll get that to you.
Some of it is, uh, need to work with Rachel in regards to, she's been kind of the point of contact, so.
Yeah.
She, you get her the information and then she can get it done because you're gonna have a bunch of people.
Absolutely. Yep. We did that with the daycare information, sent everything to Rachel.
Yeah, nothing.
I had nothing.
Mayor Mansion. Central South Leonard, forty-four eighty, Windows Avenue, Stacyville. Shadow Finisher Farm, forty-four, or forty-five fifty, Underwood Avenue, Riceville. Anderson Finisher Farm, thirty-two fifty-eight, corner of Forty-eighth Street, Riceville. Burn Site, forty fifty-one, Underwood Avenue, Riceville. Riceville Site, thirty-two forty-seven, four hundred Street, Riceville. Oddville Corp Site, forty-one forty-seven, Hickory, Hickory Avenue, St. Ansgar. Growth Farms, forty-four fifty, Jersey Avenue, St. Ansgar. Long North Finisher Farm, forty-six ninety-eight, Shadow Avenue, Stacyville. And Junction South, forty-eight fifty-six, Windfall Avenue, Rice. Thank you. Public comments?
Talking about NICO, they are a very economic source to help gather this information to create documents hereafter. And they tell you right in front that they do not have an attorney that they're using. Things they come up with are suggestions and they always tell us that. I know John does that to our council all the time. These are suggestions. You need to choose what you're going to do. So, you know, unless you want to hire an attorney to prove, read, somebody to check spelling and stuff. It's, NICO's stretched really thin and I'm sure you're, I agree with you that.
And, and I understand that, I'm just, I'm sharing the information that I was presented to me because that's my job, representing people I. I represent.
Mark didn't have to mean anything. It wasn't nothing. Between you and me.
Alright. Seeing no more comments, I will adjourn the meeting at nine thirty-two.